All right, we're going to start. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay. We had a personnel matter we had to deal with and it ran a little over. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of July 11th, 2024 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of Compliance setting forth daytime and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Mr. Moffett, roll call.
Mr. Faber?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Lamandry?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mr. Prusakos?
Present.
You have one, two, three, four, five. And Mrs. Regaloso?
Here.
That's six. You can start.
Thank you. I'd like to begin the evening by reading a statement. "I'd like to address an issue that has deeply stirred our community, a test question and an event at graduation that have been perceived by some. I understand the pain and outrage that this may have caused, and I want to assure everyone that this board and this administration, we take your concerns with utmost seriousness. As a board of education, we all believe our schools should be a safe haven where no student is devalued or dismissed and where there is no discrimination. We will work tirelessly to ensure that the education we offer is inclusive, just, and sensitive. In light of recent developments, I want to reaffirm our commitment towards setting up a culture of respect and understanding. We must work to ensure diverse perspectives are embraced and students feel safe to share their thoughts without feeling threatened or ridiculed in any way. I know we will not always see eye to eye on everything, and that's okay. The disagreements are part of this democratic process that we live in. We must learn, however, to approach problems with civility, respect, and an ear for one another. I want us all to engage ourselves in an honest conversation. Let us be able to undertake listening with understanding, as well as empathy, and to find common ground. Our schools not only provide an education, but they also instill the values of being a good citizen. It is part of our belief to teach our students how to argue respectfully and to disagree." I'd like to remind everyone that our mission is to elevate civic dialogue. We must strive to build a world with a more inclusive and equitable, where every person is treated with value and regard. Let us rise to this challenge and show the world we can respectfully disagree, but yet still find common ground." Dr. Toback?
So my report this evening is very brief. First of all, the typical summer business of the district continues with the business office preparing for end-of-the-year closeout, and that will lead to the audit. Facilities Department, of course, continues with projects across the district at all of our schools. I know that one of the big issues that we're dealing with is enrollment and classroom size, and I know that many people in the community are concerned about that. So what I've done is I've asked Mrs. Reichman to please report on our current status regarding enrollment and classroom space.
Board members, you requested an enrollment report. It's in your folders. We'll continue to update it, and you will receive it at each meeting. For this evening, I just wanted to address the concerns about the elementary class sizes. We have heard from a few parents. At this time, there have been no classes that have exceeded the board-recommended class size limit. We're watching the numbers carefully, and adjustments have been made. We have students who are moving out of the district. We have students moving into the district, and we have families that are moving around within the district. So we're continuing to watch. We have a number of requests to remain in home schools, a number of requests to go to different schools, and those will all be evaluated and considered by the Education Committee as they come in. We're currently watching three sections: Tunis Dai Grade IV, Lafayette Grade IV, and Lafayette Grade II. We have not exceeded the board-approved class size limit yet, but we are close to it. So we'll continue to monitor. We monitor enrollment daily, and in August, when we meet again, we will provide a more comprehensive class size, where we're at and what the classizers are at, and then just have some recommendations if we're to go over in any of those areas. I know it's a concern. But classroom instruction is our priority, and we'll make it a top priority throughout the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. HIB?
I forgot the HIB report. Okay. So, go ahead. The HIB report, so I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township public schools. So, yes, it's summer, but this is for a prior period. There are 13 incidents of HIB investigated since my last report. Five of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIB incidents. Actual HIB incidents.
Excuse me. There's no dialogue. All right. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda.
Right. The first I'd like to point out has to do with our Preakness School. That's part of the district's plan to address increasing enrollment. It's specifically related to the exterior envelope project, which the district is expecting to start work on what they call the envelope. So it's the outside, it's the roof and windows. So the first item, which is Resolution 09-School Resource Finance, again, on tonight's agenda, and it is for a district-awarded or related bid at their June 13, 2024, board meeting, which was challenged in the Passaic County Superior Court by one of the bidders. The subject bidder was found to contain a non-wavable defect, and the district was not allowed to perceive it to awarded contract. Due to the determination of the bid defect, and that the next highest bid was over the estimated project budget, the district decided to reject the subject award and rebid the project. So that's Resolution 09-School Resource Finance. Resolution 10, right after it, revised. I'll read that in a moment. The district rebid the project and looks to award the related contract on tonight's agenda, and that would read as follows. It's a little bit long, so stick with me. The recommend action is whereas the July 9, 2024, the Wayne Township Board of Education held a public bid opening and rebid the exterior building improvements at Preakness Early Childhood Center, and the board received seven bids at the public bid opening. And whereas the lowest numerical bid was submitted by Blackstone Group LLC, and whereas Blackstone's bid contained defects, including a failure to provide with its bid certification from its structural steel and electrical contractor, that each subcontractor's bid for the project would not cause a subcontractor to exceed its aggregate rating limits, including consideration of its backlog and uncompleted construction report, including public and private contracts, as required by NJAC 17:19-2.13 and the bid specifications. And whereas the board has determined that these failures to be material defects which cannot be waived, and whereas the next lowest numerical bid for the project was submitted by Smack Corp. in the amount of $3,146,500, which includes the base bid, alternate bids, and allowances. And whereas the board's design professional recommends awarding the project contract to Smack Corp., and the board has determined Smack Corp. to be the lowest responsible bidder, now therefore be resolved that the above recitals are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the board hereby rejects the bid of Blackstone Group LLC on a basis that it contains material non-wavable defects as set forth above. Further resolved that pursuant New Jersey public contract law, the board hereby awards a contract project to Smack Corp. in the amount of $3,146,500, which includes the base bid, alternate bids, and allowances. Further resolved, the business administrator is authorized to return the bid securities of all but the three lowest bidders if requested. Be it resolved upon the receipt of the partial executed contract, bonds, insurance, certificate, and other required documents, the business administrator is authorized to return the bid securities and remaining bidders if requested. Further resolved, the board president and business administrator are authorized to execute the contract on behalf of the board, as well as other documents required to effectuate the purpose of this resolution. So that concludes the related changes to tonight's agenda. We're adding that to the agenda to be considered tonight. Other changes in human resources, approval of transfer. We're adding on attachment number 14, Carrie Barnwell, school nurse at Wayne Valley, and that's a transfer to school nurse, TD. And six, approval of appointment of district staff. We're removing number 25, Josephina, and I'll read the last name, IURATO, paraprofessional, packenek, one full-time equivalent. M7, approval of non-certified substitute pay rates, 2425 revised on the attachment. And number six, account payroll hourly rate from $25.73 to $27.16. M16, approval of reappointment personnel. We're adding on a WEA attachment, number 823, Kelly O'Neil, which is a teacher, master's step four, $62,480. Moving on, number M20, under human resources, approval of examination for cause recommended action reads as whereas the employee ID number 3732 is employed by the Wayne Township Board of Education, and whereas based on information provided by the administration and the judgment of the board, the employee has exhibited evidence of deviation from normal mental health, which is adversely affecting employees' ability to perform essential job functions. And whereas, as a result of the foregoing, the board desires to direct the employee to submit to a psychiatric and/or psychological examination pursuant NJSA 18A:16-2, NJAC 6A: 32-6.3, and Board of Education Polity 3161. Now therefore, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, employee ID number 3732 is hereby required and directed to submit to a psychiatric and/or psychological examination by the board district's designated physician, and a written medical report detailing the results of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the board. And be it further resolved, the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and provide the employee with appropriate statutory notice of the board's action and the reasons thereof. And finally, under Q-School Resource Legal, approval of sidebar agreement to Wayne Paraprofessionals Association. Action reads as follows: The Wayne Township Board of Education approves a sidebar agreement to the July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025, collective bargaining agreement between the Wayne Paraprofessionals Association and the board regarding a sick-bank provision dated June 12, 2024. The board president and the board secretary are authorized to execute appropriate documentation to implement same and attached by reference. That concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. This time, we will open to the public for agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Regaloso? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Mr. Prusakos?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Do I have a mover for the agenda? Mrs. Regaloso? Mrs. Lamandry? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamandry?
Yes.
Mrs. Regaloso?
Yes.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlak?
Yes. Just as a note...
Motion carries.
The policies for first reading are going to be revised. They're going back to committee for some revisions and amendments to them. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Regaloso? Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Okay. Hi, I'm Beverly Margolis. I live at 122 Nellis Drive, Wayne. I've heard some disturbing reports related to the graduation in Wayne Hills, and I want to know what consequences have been applied in that scenario and moving forward, because, you know, I'm hearing also some very disturbing comments made to students, like, "Go back to Auschwitz," and that kind of thing. And I find that very upsetting as a child of Holocaust survivors. So I want to make sure that consequences are applied, and that kind of hate speech is not tolerated. Okay, your turn.
Nope. We don't respond.
What?
This is not a dialogue back and forth. You have your right to speak. We could respond at the end or at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Okay. Shall I suggest some consequences you could apply? For example, at the graduation, when those Hamas flags came out, it would have been appropriate to not hand out the diploma at that moment. It would have been appropriate to let the colleges accepting those students know that they are hate students. It would have been appropriate to do something, or to warn the next students accepting their diploma that if a flag comes out, they will be escorted off the premises. It is not appropriate to destroy the graduation day for all the other students, just so you can display your symbol of hate for everyone to see. Those flags are equivalent to a Nazi swastika for someone who's Jewish and someone who respects Israel. Consequences must be applied. As you can see from the colleges that refuse to apply consequences, you have chaos, and that's simply not acceptable. This is not 1933 Germany, where the harassment of Jewish students was allowed. This is America, and this is the great school system of Wayne, where my children graduated and earned a great living and had great teachers. Let's not give that up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Pamela Masek. I thought, you know, the letter you read was very positive and proactive, right, moving forward. And while a lot of, I know what I've been hearing, a lot of parents or residents want to know about the consequences, we also want to know what kind of proactive steps would you suggest? Something that I've been thinking about, because we want to maintain unity within the community. And is it possible, I'm just here to offer a suggestion for consideration, meet with the different leaders within the community of the different groups, the board, and then to create an event, a roundtable of sorts, where we can come, residents can come with questions. I know, I talk with people on different sides of the aisle, so to speak, and I know as a teacher in a school, a substitute teacher, I've had students, Muslim students, come to me and ask questions. A lot of times, we're working on emotion and limited information. So possibly taking some kind of a step together to have an event where dialogue can occur, a panel, so to speak, of different leaders in the community, something, just to show that we're not just reading letters and sending emails, but we're actually taking some proactive steps to work towards repairing and maintaining a semblance of unity and safety for everyone. Okay? And I'm happy to help organize it and facilitate it and moderate it, if you need someone to do that.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Bradley. I'm at Pittman Place. First off, I echo the sentiments of the other people that have spoken in regards to consequences. As a parent, we're all very much aware that empty threats are empty. You can't keep telling everybody that you're going to turn the car around. You guys really have to do something, otherwise we all recognize that you are of little authority. If I said it to my kids, they would act out in any way they chose, because we can't just say, "Don't do this," or we must show that the rules are meant to be followed by all and for the safety of all. We are not a community of religion. We're a community of people. All of our children deserve to feel safe. All of our children deserve to feel that when they are in danger, the people in charge step up and do what's necessary. Consequences must, must be employed, or you are an empty board who's here to do nothing. So please, show us otherwise. Dr. Toback, I implore you, as I have in other suggestions and in other areas, to please stop looking at situations as a means in which you can make people happy. We are not politicians, or you are not politicians, supposedly. You are educators. You don't pander, and you don't apologize for facts. Facts are facts. We talked earlier about education should be inclusive, which it should, but it should also be factual. And there's much in all of our histories that we are not proud of, much in all of the facets of our religions and offsets that we don't approve of. But you can't lump everyone in and say, "Sorry, we offended you." Much of history, of American history, is offensive to me. I wish we could avoid it, but we can't. Facts are facts, and they don't change, and you cannot apologize for them. If wording has been perhaps not exact, you can speak to the wording or other things, but to apologize for something that is truly, effectively factual is unacceptable. ISIS is a globally recognized terrorist organization, as is Hamas, as is Al Qaeda.
Ma'am, do you stop one second?
No, I'm sorry.
Please, I'll let you finish. All right? I'll let you finish. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have decorum. All right? Everybody has the opportunity to speak. If not, then we will, and I don't want to do it, I will empty the chamber. We have board business to deal with.
As I was saying, these are globally recognized terrorist organizations. There's no black or white, gray area. These are facts, and we deal in facts. My children should be educated in facts. The communities, Jewish, Muslim, and otherwise, deserve facts. I know of many of my Muslim friends who do not want to be associated with a terrorist organization. They would love it to be a factual distinction, as it should be. We deserve our children to be educated by educators who deal in facts, unapologetically. That doesn't change. This is a brilliant school system, and it should remain so. You should not pander. You should not cower. You should stand behind the side of right. And I expect to see this board be a board of action, of backbone, and of facts. Thank you.
Kim Wodar of Wayne, New Jersey. I sent this letter to you earlier, a few weeks ago. I want to just reiterate some of the things that I had asked for. I came to this council in early November of last year and said Jews are afraid that there was antisemitism rising, that we needed to keep politics out of schools. I said that in November. I think it was November 2nd, less than a month after this all started. And I implored you, start with the profile picture. Take that out of schools. And you did nothing. We are now, almost a year later, we've seen events at graduation. We've seen a despicable yearbook where the write-up of the Israel-Hamas situation is so biased, it's embarrassing. We see antisemitism events all the time in the HIP reports, so I will reiterate my suggestions to you. First, again, make the profile picture change that you said you were going to make last November. Teach children that there are rules in life, and one of these rules is that your profile picture cannot be political. Second, classify the HIP cases based on the topic of the event. Dr. Toback, you've been presenting the number of HIP cases since I've been coming to these. It's kind of this big, empty picture of what that means. We want to know what that means. Five of those cases, were they antisemitic? Were they anti-black? Were they anti-LGBTQ? Start qualifying or quantifying what these cases are and share with the community. And then you, as the board, can start taking corrective action based on what those cases are. If they're all antisemitic, something needs to be done. If they're all Islamophobic, something needs to be done. But just announcing a HIP case doesn't do enough. Third, if it's true that the abhorrent write-up in the yearbook was done by a company without your approval, you need to fire that company. If it's true that you had the opportunity to review that information and you reviewed it and passed it, shame on you. For those students who got that yearbook, give them an opportunity, send them a sticker, cover the page, because it's just disgraceful, and make the change for a new provider for next year's yearbook. I think we're all saying the same thing. Rules and consequences are important. Don't say, "We expect you to behave a certain way," and then just ignore it when the rule is broken. Have rules in place. For example, only US flags can be waved at graduation. As it was said before, if a different flag is waved, you are immediately escorted from graduation. You do not get your diploma. It's on your record for your college. It's on your record for your college that you behaved this way. Another example would be if you're giving a speech at graduation, you must stay on track to that approved speech. If you go off track, your mic gets cut, you're escorted out of graduation, you do not get your diploma, and that information goes to colleges. These are very easy to apply and we can be proactive, as I asked you to be last November. Dr. Toback, my last suggestion is directed towards you. I'm not going to repeat what I said on the email. I would just say, do not apologize for teaching facts. Stand by the truth. Stand by what you know is right and be strong. Protect our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Marina Buckman, 46 Summer Hill. And this is my daughter Fiona Buckman. Since we're on antisemitic HIB cases, my daughter has experience from, from Skylar, from the time that she was in Skylar, through the entire time that she was in Wayne Hills, all kinds of antisemitic remarks. She was physically attacked for being Jewish. She was told to go back to Auschwitz. She was told that Hitler did not finish his job. She was told that she has to pick a side when, right after the war started. She was told so many things. My other daughter was chased by, by some of the students right after the school and, and it's been going on. We reported every single case and nothing was done. Every single case dragged for the longest time.
Ma'am, wait, ma'am. One second, please. Again, it's the last time I'm going to say it. No comments, no clapping, no anything. If you don't, can't abide by the rules, then we are going to empty the chamber. It's the last time I'm telling you. That's it. Everybody deserves to have their say, not with people making comments behind them. Please continue. I'm sorry.
So, sorry, let me just finish. The emails with school went back and forth apologizing something supposedly was done. I never knew what was done. I'm like, I always wanted to know what was done? What, what took place with the students that said those things to my kids? I was told that I, it was not allowed to reveal this information. Yet it's, my kids were allowed to be suffering the mental abuse, yet they were, I was not allowed to, to have the information of what happened.
For about eight years, like my mom said, I suffered antisemitism along with my twin sister. I was told horrible things like, "Go back to Auschwitz. Hitler didn't finish his job. Go gas yourself. Join your ancestors." These things should not be said and they should not be allowed to be said. The kids who did say these things to me had no follow-up consequences. And every adult I have gotten to about this in the past eight years, including Skylar Colfax and Wayne Hills High School, nothing has ever been done. I have brought the principal involved. I have gotten other administration involved and nothing has ever been done. And all I've gotten told was, "Something will be done about this." Now, as for graduation, I graduated this past June, June 18th on a Wednesday. We were told that we were, there were very strict rules. We were told, no excess courts. You cannot decorate your caps. No decoration on gowns and no extra sashes, only what the school will provide you. If you wanted to take pictures and have your own stuff for afterwards, that is perfectly okay. Now, for the most part, most kids abided by these rules, except for most of the Arabs in my school, who I, for the most part, have been attacked by and harassed by. These kids brought their own sashes, flags, banners, everything, and nothing was done by it. During graduation, several people pulled out these banners and flags. And we were told that if this were to happen, that these kids would get pulled out of the field and pulled out of the line, no questions asked. However, when this happened, that was not done. And when I pulled over administration before I walked, I asked why nothing was being done about it. And I was told not to worry. It was going to be cut out of the live video. Several things, several things upset me about that. One, it is a live video. People who are watching it saw it. Two, families, siblings, anyone who was there to witness it was incredibly disgusted and offended by this because it was an insult, especially to Jewish students at Wayne Hills High School who have been tormented, especially since October 7th. And when I was told that, "Don't worry, it's going to be cut out of the video," I was very upset because honestly, that does nothing. Honestly, I think that video should be put out. It should show people who, who these kids are, how, how they're okay to disobey rules and disobey adults and how they're okay to show this hate. After, when I went to go walk, I was told, "Don't worry. Don't let it ruin your graduation." How could I not? I have been dealing with antisemitism for eight years in the Wayne Public District. How could I not let it ruin my graduation? It's disgusting. It's offensive. It's a spit in my face, honestly. Those kids shouldn't have gotten their diplomas that day. It should have been withheld. And after graduation, after everyone walked, it just got worse. People were spit at. Everyone was cursing at everyone. I was told, "Fuck Israel. Fuck you." There were multiple disgusting things said.
All right, ma'am, can you wrap up? Your time's up.
That's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ayelit Davids and I'm on Hubbardton Road. First of all, I want to thank Ms. LeMondi and Ms. Riglioso for responding back to my email. Basically, I have three kids. My oldest is six. We are in, I actually send, my husband and I send our kids to Jewish day school. We do not feel comfortable sending our kids to our school district. My husband and I are actually talking about, do we move out of Wayne? Because if our kids do not fit where they are right now, we do not feel safe sending them to the middle school or the high school in town. So, my question for you, or just put it out there, how do you convince my husband and I that this town is safe for my three young kids who are proud being Jewish, who are proud being part of an Israeli mom, an Israeli family? And, you know, make me feel like I can send them to this district? And a bunch of my other moms from the Jewish day school are here to support our community. We are all hurting. I can't believe we're even talking about this almost a year. So please make us feel safe and not leave this town.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Mr. Faber?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Any old business? Do business or comments? In response to everyone tonight, thank you for coming. We, we are listening to what you're saying. Dr. Toback has had countless meetings over the last two weeks and has sat down with all members of the community, all religious faiths. We do take this seriously. We are looking at policy changes right now over things that have occurred. And we're looking, and that will be coming down very, within the next two months. But policy goes through a process. It has to go, it has to go through a legal process first. Is it legal? You've had many great ideas of what to do. We have to run it through the legal courses to assure it is proper for everyone. That will be coming. I promise you that. And you will see some positive changes coming. Motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who was courageous enough to walk up to the podium to speak this evening. So I thank you for that and I thank you for everybody being here. This is such a sensitive situation that's going on in this town. And I want to say, conversations around the table have to be conversations that are filled with understanding and knowing that we all live in this town. We all have to be considerate of each other. I was raised in a completely different, I don't, I don't, I'm amazed by some things I hear. I'm amazed that this young lady walks up to the podium and is tearful with her mom by her side, right? And I'm sure there's plenty of people that didn't walk up to the podium that have different stories from both sides of the aisle. The bottom line, this is Wayne. Our school system is great, right? And we have a bunch of kids who are looking for, for guidance and leadership from their families. And there are things that we just can't tolerate as parents, right? I mean, we all have things, we all have limits and whatever. But one of the things that really, really struck me is that regardless of what happened or whatever, when you are in high school for four years with your peers and you're clapping for each other and you share classrooms and teachers and exams and everything else, you grow up in high school together. It's amazing to me to think that one group would want to hurt another group. It blows me away. And the only thing I think of is something that is unhealthy and wrong in this country. In Wayne, in the state, in the country, it's unhealthy and it's wrong. We need to have real conversations about love, about acceptance, something that's going on 6,000 miles away, right? What are we talking about? We're hurting each other here in this town? I don't get it. I think we're much better than that. I want to say thank you to Beverly for walking up and speaking. And as Dawn said, and as the administration and the board, we take this so seriously. You have no idea. I think about this endlessly. And all the experiences, all the emails I got, every single one of them tugs at my heartstrings. Every single one. That's why I respond to every single one because everybody's thoughts are valuable and they're supposed to be respected. Pam Masek, I agree, unity in our community, I love that. Is it achievable? I don't know. I guess if we put our personal agendas behind us and stop being selfish and start thinking about everybody here. I think about Rebecca, thank you so much. And Kim, thank you for the idea of keeping politics out of school. They don't belong there, if we can work on that. And Dr. Toback already spoke about the avatar situation. So that has been taken care of. Check that off the list. What's that? Oh, okay. Sorry. Leave it to Beaver. And I just want to thank everybody once again. I believe we can do a lot better. I respect my colleagues so much and the administration is trying to work with us. We're trying to work with them to make sure that Wayne is a safe place for everybody to receive the education. We are molding the future of our, of our world. We can do better. Thank you so much.
Oops. Now, we'll, we'll, it's, it's been, the avatar issue has been addressed. I can't tell you that right now until it's approved by the board.
Please trust me.
Go ahead, Dr. Toback.
Just real quick. So the avatar situation was something we committed to resolving during the summer for specific reasons. And so students will have a W. The big Wayne W, the red W, is what students will have. So there'll be no options to pick an avatar. Sitting here, listening to everybody is really, really tough. Listening to that young lady speak about her experience as a father, it's horrible to listen to. The challenge that we have to do, that we personally have to deal with, and just so you know, I read every email that comes in. I don't always respond because it's hard to respond and not be emotional about what's going on from all the emails that we see, that we get, receive. But in order to be effective as board members, we have to do our best to keep emotions out of it because we have to do what's right, what's just, and what's within the scope of what we have the power to do. What we need though is, you know, what's going on in the schools is actually an after effect of what's going on outside of the schools. The kids that are coming in, they're not being taught to act a certain way toward a specific group of people. That's not being taught in the schools. That's being learned from outside of the schools. We're just dealing with the consequences of what's going on. So what we have to happen, what we need to happen is we need the community to come together outside of the schools and figure out how to work together, how to live together. Because right now, every single topic that you can try to have a, you know, honest conversation about is so emotional to somebody. As many of you know, there was a time where I lost myself in a conversation where I got overly emotional. And it was not my finest moment. But it's very hard to keep your emotions in check sometimes when it impacts your children. And believe me, we understand that. And this is an even bigger thing because it impacts people's families that aren't nearby or, you know. But we have to come together to live in this country in a way that, you know, we all live together. You can't have it where things that are going on around the world are going to all of a sudden become conflicts. Where you're going to have people fighting in the streets here? I mean, how do you have that? We can't coexist here, then how do you expect people to figure out a solution out there? We don't have the same issues that they're dealing with there. People have freedom to live wherever they want to live here. You know, this, these conflicts have been going on for centuries. Us fighting about them here isn't going to resolve them. We need to have the families have conversations with their children, teach them to respect everybody. Stop trying to inflict your will on other people. Let people have their ability to live happily. Because, you know, that's going to be the biggest thing that, that goes with people when they leave schools. How they were treated by certain groups of people while they were in school. That's going to, that's going to shape their vision and remembrance of a certain group of people. That's how I learned who, you know, it, it's not about anybody's skin color or religion. My experiences were based on how people treated me and how they continue to treat me. And that's what people need to learn, is there's going to be good people, bad people from every walk of life. Just stick to the good people, stay away from the bad ones. But we are doing our best to try to calm these situations down in schools. But we also aren't police. We don't have, you know, everybody has a certain amount of rights living in a free society. We can't infringe on people's rights to a certain point. We don't have that ability. So we have to make sure that whatever we're doing is within the confines of the law. It's also what's going to be best for children. And it's a tough balancing act. But I assure you that we care about all the students and we are trying to do the best that we can. We need you guys to help us, please.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Giordano, Mrs. LeMondi. Thank you, everyone, for coming.